I'm going to call the first work session to order. We're going to start off by discussing the budget.
So I had a couple of people contact me saying they would like to hold some more budget discussion. So.
Here we are.
Here we are, yes. I tried to be mindful of everybody's time, so we just scheduled a meeting. So Susan had printed out budgets, that's what was advertised in the paper. But if you all want to talk, if you want to change anything, now's the time.
So is the budget amendments later on in the meeting, is that if we make any changes?
Oh, no, that's the budget we're in right now.
Okay, so a few people contacted us to invite me to collect them.
So I can pull the budget up on screen if we need to, but I mean, you have one in front of you. You can want to look at it that way. You guys just tell me what you want.
What my concern was, was the police cars. I wanted to make sure that they were on the spot. But I think there's a great place later on in this meeting, so that address will own. I want to do it as your page. But I think there's a discussion about maybe later on with an amendment.
Okay.
That was my two.
I think, because it's me, if you all want to talk about that, you have to go with executive.
Yeah.
So if you all want me to schedule an executive session at the next meeting, if you want me to do that with Ian?
Good point, good question.
Okay, how much time do we need? Three hours, right?
We just left after time and then.
Six.
So I mean, that's a problem, right?
That's right.
Fifteen minutes if that, I mean, I think fifteen minutes would be sufficient.
So June, executive session.
Quick question, was your salary included in the percent, the pool that you raised?
Okay, so everybody else got 2.5%. So it was in, was that 2.5%?
Yeah.
Now, granted, was I want to raise my own salary, no.
But you used one.
For your calculation for your pool, you've included yours in the 2.5%, right?
I do have something to follow up on, if you all would like. Skyway Outdoor Signs and Graphics. We had gotten a quote in 2023 for the sign at the fire department. Now, this quote includes double-sided display, cellular communication programming, cellular data for the sign. It includes the stone or brick base, and it includes the owner actually doing the work. Engineer drawings, steel supports and foundation. And last time when we had it quoted, it was $60,000. This time it is $63,800. So there's where we are, price of sign, and this is like pristine. This is, you know, the big boy of the signs. So are there cheaper options available? Yes, there is. But this is what was quoted to us two years ago.
And we just got a more recent.
Yes, just updated.
And it's just increased by a year.
Yeah.
So why wasn't that the one two years ago that started?
They were trying to get a grant for it, and we didn't go through.
To run into an issue where we have too much money left over from the recoveries on the state of the granddaddy. So we're reluctant to give us any money because we're studying our money.
And something that we had talked about just briefly in other discussions was letting people purchase a slot on the sign. So I had been approached last week about putting a banner up on Main Street for someone's birthday. And I said, no, because that would involve town, town workers putting it up. Plus, we're already going to have banners up there for Back to the Dragons event and Juney. So if we had this, that would be a way, if they wanted to do a sign, if they wanted to do a display, they could do that. Not saying we have to do it, it's just an option.
So this is signed for the fire department or memorial, memorial or safety?
Both.
Both, yeah.
The stone work would have like in honor of or in memory of.
It's a sign for the fire department, but for the town as a whole.
Right.
Right. Community announcement sign.
And it's double-sided. So I know there's one up at the high school that on one side it's the digital display and on the other side it's just the base sign. So. Do you all?
I've been pushing for it for two years, so.
And in that council directed spending, there was $60,000 that was allocated toward it. So do you all want to move forward? And feedback?
Only feedback, when you think about location, right, and the fire department, like there's, it's symbolic being there. But also for being a long-term information push for the town. Is that the most, I mean, she's worked all over the town, you put it at Hardee's, like, you know, it's.
I think there's a fire department there for a lot longer, right?
The electrical's already done.
Oh, good.
For the sign.
You mean, you got motorcyclists that are there and can see, you know.
I think when we originally talked about it, we talked about doing.
One there and one at Hardee's, yeah.
Yeah, which I don't think that, I mean, I'm still against that in the fact that I think that there's only room for one sign in this town.
There could be two.
Yeah, but if we're limited by cost, that's the only thing I would ask is long-term, is that the best location for, for traffic that we receive through town? Symbolically, it makes a lot of sense.
But I was thinking, take the symbolic piece out of it. During the one month, people coming from outside, they usually jump off 460, five carat rounds and come up through there because they're getting back to the dragon, and then they've got this marquee that, oh, there's restaurant X up here or whatever. So that was kind of.
I don't know, I would think they would get off at McDonald's.
So some do.
This is where you come.
But if they, if they stop at Back to the Dragon, it's going to be right there.
I know one of the things that it would help with is advertising, like if your street was going to be closed for a bit, we could put that on there well ahead of time and say, hey, this street will be closed such and such day. That would be benefit of having it there.
You're saying at, if we're going to have Main Street closed, that is there, yeah.
I like it. We've allocated this thing, but we just don't move on.
Right.
I'm not going to see. She has $3,800, you know, but probably the same funding line.
So am I hearing it go ahead?
Yeah, I'd say it's complete, it's up.
Awesome, thank you.
Are we emotional over this?
It's a budget, so it should be up to budget, right?
I don't think so. I think we're not in the meeting.
Yeah, we allocated the funding, so.
I just needed your blessing.
I'm surprised it's only one.
That much, yeah, yeah.
Because we know we're probably made. She.
Tink.
Good on that?
Yeah.
Okay, some of the items I wanted to discuss in terms of the budget. And I think first I want to approach what, I know you had a term for it specifically, but I would call it budget surplus, that we think that we're going to have after the end of this fiscal year. Do we have, I was noticing, it looked like, I'm looking through the council packet, it's like, fire department's had some extra costs. There's been, there's been extra costs across the board. But do we have an estimate for how much budget surplus we think we're going to have at the end of this fiscal year? And I know we talked about the paving as well.
So Jessica and I took a whole day last week and worked on just kind of what we were talking about, the council-directed spending. And we wanted to make sure what had been brought in from that part of money, what still needed to be shifted. And the fire department, if I'm not mistaken, that's what it was, right?
Yeah.
So. Journal entries, right? Okay, so Jessica made journal entries because you all had already voted for all of that to be done. So she made journal entries to bring that money into the actual budget because it had not been prior to. So Public Works. We went through amendments and Public Works had some leftover that was allocated to the owner, and it was said to put it toward paving. So that's what we did. And that's in your budget amendments tonight, or is it journal entry?
That was a journal entry.
Okay.
Yeah.
So we have moved, do you remember right off how much it was that we moved to paving? It was a lot.
$38,850, around there.
So we moved that into paving. So I don't know if you guys have noticed, but they've been working over on Riverside Drive. We milled it up this week, well, we hired it to milled it. It's smoother with the milling than the asphalt that was actually there. But if the weather cooperates, it will be paved Thursday, Friday this week. And that's due to being able to move some of that money over.
Do sidewalks fall into the paving or are they separate?
They have a separate line item. So after you guys do the budget amendments tonight, we will have a way better look at where we're at with projections. But we looked at that too, and we were 300? At least 300.
Okay.
If, if nothing else goes, boom.
Then one wins, right?
Yeah.
And we give, so the waterline project coming up, we, the pipe fiasco. Or who's going to get stuck purchasing, that's incorrect, that's not.
What?
So when we, we met, or last week, then the plans had called for a certain size diameter, like 12 inch and either only eight inch or something?
No, it was completely left out of the bid. It wasn't like the wrong price, the wrong size was ordered.
Okay.
It was completely left out of the bid.
So the 12 inch was left out?
Eight inch. 655 feet of eight-inch line was completely left out of the bid. So we do have contingency in that project. However, like the loan is $1.3 million. The principal forgiveness is 1.2. So we still have.
The water room?
Yeah. So.
But it's things like that we have to ensure we have.
Yes, yes. So I'm going to go get my hair done tomorrow because it's turned gray, just from that bid sheet. So. I was speaking with Eno and with Air Pipe and Al the material distributor. And I think we're going to be able to order everything else except for air bridge crossing from there at Hardee's. Those prices have changed since we awarded this project. They tell me it's not that much. $4,000 more for it for all that. But we're looking at like a $200,000 order tomorrow for materials. And that'll almost, except for the bridge crossing, have everything ordered. So. Just one more little update on that, just in case anybody's wondering. They did cut the road today, like starting around into Italian Village, going out toward.
I was going to ask about that.
Going to ask, I'm going to go towards the red light, bend and bolt red light. And we're going to have to replace that red light, some of the cannibal works to it. So if you see some stuff going on with the red light, it's because when we dig, we're going to tear out the, what's it called, the loop for the red light. So we had to order and fix the red light. If you see anything going on with red light, that's what it is.
Do we have an idea when we're going to shut that portion of road down?
June the ninth.
June ninth?
School will be out. And the goal is to have it done before school opens back up, that section. That's the goal. So please give thoughts for winter, never mind.
So the purpose for, I mean, for talking about the budget surplus that we have coming over from this fiscal year into the next fiscal year is because we're looking at a series of projects that we want to get done, right? We want to get, we discussed the rainy lot transitioned over into multi-use athletic builds. We want to pursue a mountain biking project. We want to pursue a farmer's market. And with our rescue funds, like this is all going to go very quickly. And part of the reason for talking about that is to also talk about the LGIP for the general fund reserve, see where that's allocated at. And like I just crushed it based on the packet that was given to us. I was thinking we were somewhere around 28%. This is showing 15% based on our, our upcoming budget for the expenditures. What I'm trying to get a grasp on, and one of the things I'm asking, you know, if we're pursuing these projects, is to carve up the COVID funds, allocate them to your projects that you want to have. My fear is that we're going to run out of funds quicker than, than we, for what we have them allocated for. For example, for what did we allocate towards the farmer's market? It was like.
$296,500.
$296,500, right? That's a, that's a $2 million plus project, which I think we could get done for maybe a million. But we're still way short on that. So part of the reason for having this discussion would be to look, see if there's anything that we could shave off our emergency fund in order to fund these projects, that way we can get them accomplished in an expeditious manner. Little bit of budget surplus carryover from, from this fiscal year, $300,000. Maybe it's gobbled up in a waterline project. But I'm having a hard time, like we've got these projections, but I don't think that we have a roadmap in order to get there. We know that we're going to be hired on another person that assists. We know that we want to go after grant dollars. But I don't think we have a comprehensive, a comprehensive plan for tackling these items systematically. And if we could do that, with this limited amount of time, to take the rescue funds, obligate them, and then actually just have like a candid conversation as to whether or not we think that that's practical. So for example, the farmer's market, that project right now is a long shot because we've got eh, close to $300,000. It's a million dollar project plus, it's 2.7, I think, is what they told us. And we scaled it down to be closer in terms. But if we're looking for achievable results over the next few years, I think this is where that conversation starts because you have to fund these projects appropriately in order to get them done. And I'm just trying to make arrangements about it. It's like, can we actually shave off the emergency fund to obligate to these, these projects? So I'm open to suggestions.
And is there a threshold that starts making you uncomfortable once we start? If it's decided to start shaving off, where did, what dollar amount would we hit where you're like, all it takes is, you know, a bridge problem?
So.
Kind of a disclaimer, like that's not the intent. I don't want to take that thing down to.
Absolutely.
To urgency to do these pet projects. But we do want to be deliberate in how much we're actually obligating to the emergency fund so that we can actually get these results accomplished.
And if we want to look at a multi-use sports complex that, I mean, we need to get someone in there to. And then. Kind of draw it out and give us a plan which will lead to a cost sign, tell us if it is feasible or not.
And then, you know, I had a conversation with Jay Shuck, who came in here in August of last year. Still interested in helping us up the Lincolnshire. I know that we discussed the turf, it's not turf, it's grass, but helping with the, just the water problem and actually getting that mapped out. At that time, we discussed, like, hey, if you're going to do press boxes and new lights, whatever, like there's still enough meat on the bone to where that swap, if it occurs, could happen. He's still interested, we've not been discussing it since August. But we got a series of projects, I think that's great. I don't think that we have a roadmap to get there based on budget law obligations.
So is a lot of this money that we're covering, right?
It is. And I've got another proposition to help offset it, and this was discussed last year. You know, we're looking at the 503 acres that we have that already have two hiking trails on them. We've got another 664,000 acre, I wish it was 664,000. Shoot, man, we'd be in our own state. But 664 acres. And my proposition in the ball was trading asset outside of town to purchase assets in town. So if you sell that for eh, 664 times, 1,200 bucks per acre, 15,000?
Thousand.
100,000, you want me to use?
Thousand.
Thousand, okay, well, that's easy. So $664,000. And that can get your, that can get your farmer's market accomplished. But I would still be open to trading assets outside of town to improve assets in town, to get the rainy lot done, you know, be done. Farmer's market. I'm pretty indifferent when it comes to the project, but I definitely want to move quickly in getting, getting something done.
Is there anything we're missing with that property on Brad? And I know one's a backup water source, or was the water source at one time. Is there anything we're just not thinking of with that land, why the town has held on to it for so long?
I know the property, 503 acres, that's going to be the mountain biking property. That's the one that has water reservoir on it.
Maybe. Yeah, it's, it's a maybe, I mean.
Because it's earmarked, that doesn't mean it's going to be spent there.
Well, I'm talking about the project, that property.
So that project.
That, that property.
Yeah.
But that property is the one that has water reservoir on it, the other piece of property.
Any problems, like, I'm okay with, if it doesn't work because of terrain, or if the council decides it's not worth pursuing, like, let's pivot, but let's pivot and move quickly to a project that we can achieve. Yeah, I'm not, as far as I did, I'm not attached to anything, you know, like it's my pet project.
So the larger portion, regardless, what's the significance of that?
I know that we timbered it before, like right when I first started here, we timbered that land. But I've also been told it's not ready to timber anytime soon.
Yeah, I was told the same thing, but it's not mature enough now.
I don't know of any significance that it has to us. And just an asset on the books, yes. Unless you all know.
But I would think you sell it, you do not sell that thing.
Can you put a honey club out there? Like, like how can you use an asset that's not used? Are we a land conservator? Do we just, just hold property to hold it?
Something that concerns me about both those properties is their accessibility too.
Yeah.
We don't have the access, we're kind of landlocked where we're at. I mean, is, is that why we held on to it? Maybe.
Well, I agree with Zach on one piece of property, you know, if you could sell one thing. Because it is that.
I'm sorry, I'm here listening now. The old ones have passed away. It's not what you think they have.
What about the other piece of property out there?
Excuse me, you said it. Who said it?
What? He said what?
He's got, he's saying something.
Oh, you said you talked to, you said you talked to people who have passed away. I said, how did you talk to them?
So the other piece of property out there that doesn't have the reservoir. The other piece of property out there that don't have the water on it. Do you know anything about that piece of property that why we held on to it?
I don't really, it's just a place where it shouldn't be close to the water.
Now, I can agree, the water reservoir, we don't want to sell that property.
It's just like a sign. There may be people talking about that's still water source in there. And you don't know, there's going to be on that property.
Well, you should come sell that property, that's what. It's the other piece of property we're looking at possibly sell.
There's the one.
And you sell it because it's out of town. We do nothing with it, and you can have what we have in town. It's several pieces of property, though.
And it's separated by.
Yeah, it's separated by piece of property.
Now, can we go and buy the land at the center, but four will embark out there later? The council is not interested in that.
The town has property out of ground, two pieces. Okay, in your past serving, do you know why we've kept those properties?
Is it up in the mountain?
Yes.
Clocks is running.
One has water reservoir on it, one does not. Do you know any reason that we kept those?
The cost of value of it keeps going up, is all I can remember.
They're not making it anymore.
I agree, they don't make land anymore.
Yeah.
You can buy it.
That's all I recall.
Thank you.
Back on him, like the value of it keeps going up, resonating with the police?
The other piece of property, the one that doesn't have a water source on it. One of them is 503 acres, that's the one with the water reservoir. The other one's 600 and.
64.
63 acres.
I'm going back when I first started to think, you've got dirt you don't need to sell, and you know, maybe that's always what's going to appreciate value, and you have it there as a greenback, but you don't actually have a back account for it. That's going back to days when Mr. Horace was down.
So that's.
That's it.
That's our knowledge.
That was eight acres, and that wasn't the only one, but that was the one I was always talking about.
Okay.
Just, I'm sorry, what is that? Well, the original purpose, like that's a concept, that's a means to an end. The real end is if we can identify these, these projects and we want to hit them, you got to fund them.
Should we have another name like we did early, early when we came forward and discussed how we were discussing the project and what we need to do over the course of the next three, four years? Should we add another name to put on that?
If you're about to hire an economic developer to assist me in pursuing projects, then if we don't have, if we don't, like, what are we doing? Like, if we don't have, like, land space, money, and partnerships, like, what are we actually aiming at? And that's, I'm not frustrated, but do you think it's, it's, it could be a point of frustration when we're. I don't think we have a clear end to the goal that we're trying to achieve.
Almost all, and it's just going to start, start building.
We're trying to get grants so we can actually have the money to go build it.
What do you have so far for it?
Council had allocated $296,000 for it, and that was a match to a tobacco commission grant. So we actually are going next week to Bristol to a tobacco commission meeting in hopes of, they won't look at us in the face and tell us, no, we're not getting that money. in hopes of they won't look at us in the face and tell us, no, we're not getting that money. So we've applied for that grant, we've applied for a 50,000 grant with AFID, like, A-F-I-D. There's another 50,000 grant with T-Mobile that we're gonna try to get. The problem is, is haven't got the grants yet to be able to go down there and start building.
We've also applied to the county for the 50,000.
Yes.
Right, so you've got a, like, when the, when the quote came in, you got a $2.7 million facility that was 10,000 square feet. That's since then been scaled down. But that's, that's what I'm stating is we do have rescue funds, we do have projects on the books. Are you actually gonna obligate a budget to those projects to actually see them accomplished? Then the question on, do you shave from your emergency fund? I saw you looking at that.
So, VRA would like us to have 25% reserve, 25% of our budget. So our budget is $7,246,350. 25% of that is $1,811, sorry. $1,811,000, 587.50. So 1.8 million dollars.
We're at 1.2.
In the general fund reserve, yes.
Okay, so we're, we're at 15% funded. VRS wants us at 25%. So shaving from your emergency fund, that's, that's out the window. Alright, so that concept's dead. I don't know how we were so off, because we were talking, and I was, I was thinking we were...
Well...
We're looking at last year's figures, perhaps.
Maybe.
Maybe, doesn't matter how we got there. But that, okay, so that option's out the window. So then you're, you're to your COVID funds. And part of the reason for looking at, I think, just like, you know, we did ten years prior, I think that you would want to weight your projects in terms of things that are, would have more of an economic impact to, to your town. Hence the concept for not hiking tours, not for recreation. Capitally in China, and there could be another one.
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's time for the...
I got more time to speak here, too.
Yeah. We've got three levels here, and some parts of town.
They are, but the town is still nice.
Alright, so we're gonna move from our budget discussion to our first public hearing, which is a charter amendment to town manager residency mileage extension. Notice of public hearing pursuant to Virginia Code 15.2-202. Our EPL replaced...
Replacement volume.
Replacement volume 2018, the Town and Town Council Planning Commission will hold a public hearing on May 13, 2025, 6:45 PM in the council chambers for the Town of Townsville located at 201 Central Avenue, Town of Virginia 24651, at which time, in place, the citizens of the Town of Townsville shall have the opportunity to be heard to determine if the citizens of the town desire for the town council to request a general assembly to amend the town's existing charter. A summary of the proposed charter amendment involves the revision of the language of Article 3, the council, Section 3-91, to read as follows. I need to read this whole thing.
I can do it real quick. Take a second. Section 3-9 appointee, Section 3-91, a town manager here shall be the administrative executive head of the municipal government. He, she shall be chosen, that's the first part of the amendment, shall be chosen by the council without regard to equipment, waste, and soil on the basis of his, her, executive, and administrative qualifications. At the time of his, her appointment, he, she not need to be a resident of the town or the Commonwealth, but during his, her tenure, obviously shall reside within the town and is encouraged to reside within the town limits and neighbors, if in a reasonable distance outside of town limits, upon majority approval to appointing council. That's it.
So, anyone from the public wish to speak on this issue?
Terry, go to the boardroom.
I'm sorry.
That is...
Clues.
I have clues. Issue on that one, too. Does that give the right for the town manager to move outside of, than the council members?
Can you tell them?
It's only dealing with the council, it should be town manager. It's the only deal with the appointment of the town manager.
How many miles out?
Is that a reasonable amount?
Reasonable.
Agreed on by the council.
Reasonable, not agreed on by the council. To give you some context, this is the same charter amendment that was proposed by the Town of McCann outside of Lexington, Monroe County, Rockbridge County, which was passed by the General Assembly this past term.
This one, that's our day. We need to move into town.
That's the way it always was before. And the whole point is being, of course, we're addressing Leanne, it's a good thing right there on paper, what's here for. But it's one where you're gonna run into more and more problems with limited spaces when you're trying to hire someone in town at the salary and benefits that you're proposing to hire beyond Leanne, that's going to limit you in your ability to potentially find them a place to live. And this at least gives you the flexibility, hopefully you'll have a place. Otherwise, I mean, as a, as a town citizen, I'll probably have a little bit of issue with it. But again, it's common sense, as the council will agree, that you say, look, they look, they see if they can find someplace within town, and if they can't, you didn't have the discretion and latitude to give them discretion to find someplace that's close, but not necessarily within the town confines. Also, what do you do, why would it work if you go through and amend your boundaries, which we've done before, and you expand and include more of the peak? You expand, you include all period addition. Then you're already covered. You already got something in mind, so. It's a reasonability factor. I think it's something that, it's not one we have. You've got the manager thinking, oh, well, they need to live in town because they need to be right here with the pulse of what's going on in town. I, I get that. I think you ought to, too. But this is one where you've got some options that gives you, again, the discretion to be a little bit more inviting. Next time Leanne moves on to another job, the next council has something, you know, else that they want to do, bring somebody else in, and then you don't have that. So that's what's there, or at least that's what you've asked and prepared for actual to accomplish. Can I answer your question, Ben?
Yeah, I'm sorry to answer your question, Travis.
So, anybody else comments? Not, we'll recess until seven o'clock for the next public hearing? Do we want to go back?
Yeah, can we?
So I assume legally, right, we can go back?
Yeah. Yeah, let's flip it on seven. So let's, let's say that we don't do...
Just get on the record.
Let's, let's say we, we don't obligate any funds towards any of the projects that we've identified. You know, what's an alternative course of action that we can do that would make the town better? And instantly, my head goes to debt and interest. Right, we're, we're at 7% of our, our debt borrowing capacity for geo bonds. I don't think that revenue bonds are taken into consideration on that. But last night, I just kind of crunched some of the numbers, it didn't have, like, the trash truck in there. But like, over the life of these loans, and that's somewhere to the tune of, like, some of them are like 40-year loans, you're gonna be paying 1.2 million dollars in interest, that were just thrown away. So there's an alternative. You could, you could hit the refresh button. Just kill, kill your debt, and then the town's in a better fiscal situation. You're not able, like, you could, I mean, there's a math equation there to determine whether or not you would kill the debt to go take out 5% to 7% for... You know, if you're gonna do that, pick out one project, hit it, and be done with it. But like, as an alternative, if we don't earmark those and try to do items that grow your top line revenue, then we could alternatively cut our expenses. And that's, that's an alternative course of action that I would be comfortable with. That's physically responsible, that, that makes us, you know, look responsible, I mean, it is responsible for the town taxpayers. But what it doesn't do is capture top line revenue growth. And you're gonna have those costs again in the future. That's what our former council was, was saying. Pave the roads, great. You're gonna have to pave them again. It's an depreciating asset. It's an alternative course of action, too.
So I'm, I'm good, I'm just...
What's the final numbers on the farmer's market?
So the original was for a 10,000 square foot, the one that we posted on social media, was a 10,000 square foot open air building, which we, we think is overpriced, like, that they put it as way overpriced, right? But 2.7 million on that.
We've about had a hard time.
We did reduce the size of the structure and ask them to redo it. And the whole reason that we had this done through top assembly was because the tobacco commission said we need a PER, a preliminary engineering report. And so that's why we had to go that route, we didn't let...
What did we pay Tom for that?
Twenty... Let's say 30.
I was about to say, it's about 28.
Okay. So we had to have that in order to apply for a grant.
And the revision brought it down to 583,000 when they reviewed it the second time.
It was eight something.
That was the 296,000.
That was phase one.
So just the, the thing.
Yeah.
You know, in my mind, I just think we're wanting too much for that property. I mean, when you look at the farmer's market in Woodford, Virginia, and you look at the farmer's market in Richland, it's nothing extraordinary. And yet, we're wanting to do bathrooms and all this other stuff, and it's too much. It's a seasonal event. And it's probably the only farmer's market I know that doesn't have vegetables. It's more of a craft show. Just go out there one Saturday morning. There's very few vegetables. You know, there's crafts. It's more of a, like a craft vendor setup. You know, the one lady has soap, you know, they sell baked goods. You know, the little couple that was here, I guess, last month or the month before, they sell strawberries dipped in chocolate. But you can't get a strawberry. I just think we wanted to try to do too much with that property.
But that's the farmer's market aspect of it. We also wanted to make it a stage, so it's not a seasonal thing.
Right, so we could have it in multi-use, because the complaint that I got last year was, we closed Main Street too much. It hurts my business. Then it's, well, it helps my business. I, I literally got both sides of the card. So in trying to combat that, it could be another space that we can hold events, that we don't want to shut down the room, that we don't directly compete with a different, like, a restaurant. That, that was the thought behind it.
Supposed to get more tax, well, there...
But you can't go in debt 2.7 million dollars to do it.
I agree with that.
It's just, it's foolish.
That's what we're saying.
Then we all agree with that.
That's why we're going for grants.
Yeah, but you, you can't depend on grants for everything when you're setting on the money in the bank that hinders you from getting grants.
But I mean, we revised the, the drawing. It's not 2.7 anymore.
Right.
What's the town? That's what I'm saying, it's 2.7.
It was eight something.
Is irrelevant.
When that, the revision come down to eight. It was, it was right at $600,000 for the actual structure. That was phase one. Phase one, it was like $600,000. And I'm just gonna be honest, I don't think that it's gonna cost that much, but I'm not in the construction world, so maybe I'm wrong.
But the, the facility's size went down to 2,800 square feet?
It did.
So it's a possibility. So like, it's about the same size as we have it in the charter.
I don't know what the size of that one is, I'm sorry. Which one?
35 by 80. The upper, 35 by 80, maybe?
Yeah, no, it's about, it's about that size, 2,400 square feet.
Yeah.
So your vendors will, I mean, basically you're gonna pay the shit. For 800,000 plus site proprietors. Hey, the good news story to that is by working with the ACDs and tear down the building, you could save like 40,000 dollars. Like, whereas in 2022, the idea had just promotions to do like, get a couple of months. It would, it would cost more that way.
Alright, next is our, uh, public hearing on the 2025, 2026 budget. Public notice proposed FY 2026 budget on the 13th day of May, 2025, at 7:00 PM in the Town Hall, Townville, Virginia. The Townville Town Council will hold a public hearing on the budget for information and planning for fiscal year 2025 through 2026, as well as the tax rates and fee schedules. The entire proposed budget may be inspected by the public from 8:00 AM until 4:30 PM Monday through Friday at the town manager's office in Townville, Virginia. You wanna kick us off, Leanne? What are you looking for here?
I mean, if anybody asks, any comments?
On the budget? Any... Anybody? Alright, I guess that concludes our, uh, public hearing on the budget, and we will reconvene at 7:15 for the next.
There is still a sale of farmer's market, because Susan and I was talking about something today, and I have an idea. I don't know that it will help nor hurt, but what if we went to talk to a actual contractor and say, here's these plans that have been presented to us. What's the real numbers? Like, what would you bill this? What's the cost?
But you might have to worry about procurement, they're right, can...
Not just to talk to them.
200,000 dollars, you wouldn't have to...
Just to talk to them, though.
Don't need to talk to them, you're not...
I'm not, I'm not saying that we're gonna use it.
Not putting out the bid.
Just, just to talk to an actual contractor.
To get some real prices.
I mean, I don't know where we go from this if we don't get grant funds. Do we just scrap the whole project? Is that what we do? Then what do we do with that property down there?
I think that's exactly, I've been trying to say.
It is, exactly. So what would it hurt if I talked to a contractor just to say, what's the real dollar?
I think that would be great.
Okay, that'd be on my to-do list.
Maybe get him to mark out on the slab the size of the, you know, one stuff that'll go away, the size of the structure that they're talking about.
Are you gonna talk to them pre-condensing or the large full lap scarlet?
Yeah, go big, go home.
Yeah. Because, I mean, Zach's right, I mean, if it's someone that'll be the size of one of the, the largest picnic pavilion on Lincolnshire, then you might get what, four vendors in there?
Right, and then you, you may just ship, have a couple of baths up there, then it's an open air market, just, just landscape it to death.
Maybe reach out to the Heritage Metals on Walnut Street, because those, those guys have done a great job with their building, and, well, they're men and knights, but they're really nice guys, and they're selling packages, and, and they'll make you a package for your square footage.
We bought one for Warhout Park, and just update on that. Don't know if you guys have been back, but the, the actual structure's blown up. And that's thanks to the career technical school.
So what size is that structure? So what did the package cost, 20 or 40?
Like 10 grand.
Exactly.
Let's get the arm.
I really think it's 30. 30 up there? Chris Harley wanted it.
I was thinking 40, just to grab, I, what'd you say, 10 or 40 or 20? You figure when you, this, is it the size of this room?
No.
He said half the size of this room.
Probably.
So there you go. So let's say 35 by 15, 40 to 20 dollars.
Okay. Chris Harley would know.
So I think that, that'll work out, if you can...
So, I think that, that'll work out if you can talk to Heritage Metals and get your seat. How much?
Because if you think about it, the back of the dragging building is nothing but a shelter.
And we're not even gonna close it.
It's a pole farm.
Yeah.
Pole farm.
How much was the building in the T and L, just the building?
600,000, you said, right?
The first one?
Yeah.
In there were million dollars.
Yeah, it was everywhere.
But I don't, I don't, we ruined that price. But everywhere. I can honestly sit here and say, it is not for life we're trying. It's, there's been a lot of hours put into that project.
So, we, okay, I wanna shift away from that, but like, we're gonna be approximately, after this back of admission, which is coming up in about the, you're probably gonna be at like, what was it, maybe 600? Do you shot up 600 as far as the budget goes? If they grant you a warrant? Around 600,000. We've applied to the back of admission. We've got about 290 on it.
Yes.
A little bit of that.
Yes. Hey, Chris, do you remember the size of the shelter at Warhol Park?
No, it looks like every day. Didn't have some agreement?
It is, but I'm...
All right, then, Leanne, the other one, you know, we go start with Mr. Shot, they're so interested in that project, we wanna explore what it would look like in order to improve Lincolnshire, the little builds, and facilitate a real estate swap. Joe's nodding.
Yeah, this is, this is for nature improvement.
Yeah, move to Lincolnshire. Yeah, move to Lincolnshire.
I'm confused about that one, because if, like, you approve Lincolnshire, so that's two fields. But then you, you, if you do a swap, then where are the other two fields gonna go?
Those become a, they haven't built out, uh, to be a, like, an optional right.
I know, I know that part, but where are we putting two more fields? Because right now, we're existing on four fields, and why would we go from fours to two?
The, uh, Lily doesn't, Lily...
Right.
Yeah, Lily doesn't play at Lincolnshire.
I know. But it's still, there's still practice out there sometimes. And, you know, if you have little league competing for those fields, and we wanna do softball out there, too, you know...
You're restricting.
Yeah, you're restricting.
But we're also talking about putting another multi-use field in the Ramiald.
You're gonna put baseball up there?
I mean, you could put T-ball out there to practice. I used to practice at Warhol Park.
And that's another consideration, now that Warhol Park, Warhol Park, I can't say Warhol, it's a multi-use, and if it's there, you've lost, there's another field that's gone. So, some, I mean, conversation with the county on utilizing the fairgrounds, they were, they were open to discussions on improving that, to have builds there. Practice fields, you have nothing really...
Well, we practice up, we practice up there, right?
I think if you're talking about Lincolnshire, you'd need to talk about improving Lincolnshire as a whole as well, because when it was redone years and years ago, they eliminated a lot of parking. And then, when you go out there for soccer practice or soccer games, there's nowhere to park. So, you know, you're trying to put more into Lincolnshire, so you're creating even more of a parking problem. So, I mean, it, I think that if you're trying to do all of this stuff to Lincolnshire, you need to look at it holistically.
Yeah, I think that that's part of the discussion. I mean, the worries that were spoken to me were, build it out, and then let's talk. Like, see what improvements you wanna make, get a estimate on it, and then see if there's a deal to be made. And so far, that was discussed in August, we said meet, and we haven't done anything else since then. The reason for bringing it up and looking for additional money for the town, that came up in conversation. Yes, Jay's still interested in it. So, because we haven't discussed it, that's just part of the reason to bring it up. What that would look like is to see what it would cost to improve lights. We've got an idea on the builds.
Okay, so...
Pre-press boxes lights, and then...
Where are we? Because we're talking about doing a comprehensive plan, right? So, where are we in that process? Because this is all stuff that should be in a comprehensive plan.
Chris and I were talking about that this week. That's, um, that's usually something that planning commission kinda molds. So, all of our projects that we're talking about either need to go in that comprehensive plan, or we need to say, okay, maybe that's not doable. And I think that's where we're going in this conversation.
That's what I'm pleading for.
Right.
Is like, actually, like, let's have a vision and a vector, like, that's gonna knock them down.
So, the drawings you had two years ago that Jay shot had, are they still in play?
That's, based on the conversation last Wednesday, yeah.
What were those drawn?
I probably got it in an email in September.
No, I think we have to start with those drawings.
Oh, yeah. The, the, which, which location?
Lincolnshire.
Lincolnshire, yeah. All it is, is we're taking baseball builds that are already in existence and improving those facilities.
But they were press box.
There's that category.
And the dugouts were different. And I can assure you there was a third field.
Well, the soccer field, we're discussing, you know, utilizing what you stated, you want it seen done before the end of the year, is to get that, make it grass-built, multi-use sports. It's probably gonna take too long time.
I think that we all need to come together at another time and have a discussion about comprehensive plan, and basically what council wants to send to planning commission to be considered to be put in the plan.
Yes, I agree with you.
Do we wanna schedule a work session?
Right, we created a prioritized list in January and said, these are the targets. And what I've been asking for is, if you've got a target without a budget, you don't really have a plan. And that's, that's the whole purpose of the discussion. But if we're looking for hiring a economic director, have at least one have it funded and give that person a project to do in addition to analyzing your enterprise, signing your new bag, project, or incentives, and, like, there's enough work to do, but if you're gonna hire a person, have work to do.
So, do we wanna set a work session?
Yes.
Does anybody have time that they're not gonna be here? In the next month?
If the sun's out, I'm not gonna be here.
Only rainy next week, right?
In my work schedule, I don't have between now and August.
Um, do we wanna do like a separate from regular council meeting? Like, we'll leave...
I think we get more, huh?
Okay.
I think we will, too.
Doodle poll? We'll sit down and doodle poll this week.
Can we have a morning work session?
Sure.
I can.
Oh, 'cause you gotta go.
Have you there the lunch?
Yeah.
All right, well, we need to pivot and move on to the next public hearing, the rezoning Harris Lane properties. Notice is hereby given that on Tuesday, May 13th, 2025, at 7:15 p.m. in the council chambers of the municipal building for the town of Tasswell, located at 211 Central Avenue, Tasswell, Virginia. The Tasswell Town Council and Town of Tasswell Planning Commission will hold a joint public hearing pursuant to Virginia Code 15 dot 2 dash 2204, Town Charter Section 3 dash 8, and Town Code Section 23 dash 6, to provide the citizens of the town an opportunity to be heard with respect to a proposal for the town to amend Chapter 23 zoning of the code of the town of Tasswell in order to revise the zoning map classification for properties located in areas at or near Harris Lane, and advised by the following tax map parcels, number 094B, 109 Alpha, 000A Bravo, and 094 Bravo, 109 000 Bravo. The proposal requests the identified properties be rezoned from their current conservation special C dash 1 classification to a revised residential limited R1 classification. The general usage and density range of the proposed zoning classification amendment will be residential limited with a range of 0 dash 2 dwellings, units per acre, which would reflect a change from the current range of no permitted uses, with the usage and density range as set forth in Point 6 of the comprehensive plan for the town being low-density residential. A copy of the proposed ordinance amendment, map revision, and listing of the individual tax map parcel numbers of the properties to be affected are available for review and inspection during normal business hours, 8:00 a.m. through 30:00 p.m. at the town castle municipal building, as referenced here in above. So, do we have any members of the public here to speak on this issue?
Well, we're the ones trying to buy the property, so... Yeah, we're the ones that are gonna get zoned to residential, and we're gonna build a house up there.
We have public, why not three?
Of course, if we already got a house up there, a ten conservation, then we need to change shots.
But that, so that's not included in this?
Yeah, it is.
Oh, okay.
I done talked to her. She got a letter in, I talked to her in front of her. She's okay. Mine's her taxes, anyway.
So, no more public comment? Any, anything from council, Chris, Leanne, Brad? Okay, so, uh, we'll move away from public hearing, and we will start back up at 7:30 with the regular town council meeting. Welcome, ladies and gentlemen, we're going to call to order the regular town council meeting. Please stand for the flag of allegiance.
Flag of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which stands, one nation, under God, in the visual of liberty and justice for all.
Bless you. Dear word, thank you for the standing, all that you've done for us, thank you for leading us off to this meeting tonight, and we ask that you'll please be with each and everyone that may have a part in tonight's meeting, and we ask that you'll let the best decisions in the interest of the town be made. We ask to see your name, ladies.
Please be seated. So, Dave, first on the agenda is the introduction of Public Works Director Chris Mitchell, Assistant Public Works Director David Scrotzky, and Foreman Callout Director William Asbury. Andrew Rick.
So, if I could have all three of you guys standing up? I won't let me come up. So, we have Chris Mitchell, who is now our Public Works Director. We have William Asbury, who is our foreman and callout director, and Dave Scrotzky, who is our assistant public work director. And I would like to give them a huge, big round of applause and thank you. So, these guys have a very hard job, and they are absolutely doing a fantastic job. So, I really appreciate everything that you guys did for us.
Well, thank you guys for stepping up and, yeah, filling in when we were definitely in need of, you know, replacing some people and everything, and I really do appreciate it. Next on the agenda is EMS presentation recognition, but right prior to that, I do wanna comment that this week is police week, so we'd like to thank Chief and all his staff for all that they do. And next week, May 18th through 24th, is EMS week, and the same goes, you guys work tirelessly, and, you know, we really do appreciate it. So, let's get moving.
Good luck in your life. I just wanna give you a little bit of information on EMS week. National EMS Week started, was started by President Gerald Ford, Secretary Ford, and it takes place the third week of May each year. It celebrates emergency medical service professionals and acknowledges their crucial role in emergency medicine, honoring the first responders and medical professionals dedicated to saving lives. We will be celebrating EMS week this year from May 18th through 24th. Carillion House Community Hospitals providing our employees free breakfast on Monday. Katie Del also said they had several other duties planned for the week for us to celebrate as an honor. Also, we have a cookout at the station on Saturday, May 24th, doing hamburgers, hot dogs, and store prizes, so I welcome y'all to come and lead your way through that. We haven't set a time on May yet, but it's gonna be Saturday, May 24th. I'll be back to you. I also wanted to give a brief history and some mox about our profession. This is like a lot, but it's just crony, because I can't see, so... In 1962, Major Donovan Letterman established the U.S. Ambulance Corps within the Army of Potomac to try on wounded wounded soldiers on active battlefield rather than to treat them after the battles. And due to its success in saving lives, ambulance corps were subsequently adopted throughout the Union Army. Major Letterman is regarded as the father of the United States Emergency Medical Services. During the Civil War, the need for organized field care during the Civil War led to the establishment of early ambulance services with the first civilian ambulance service introduced in Cincinnati, Ohio, in 1865. Post-war war developments, in the 1920s, the formation of volunteer rescue squads took the shift and control towards municipal hospitals and fire departments for patient transport. And this is a really interesting fact, I didn't know this until I was doing some research. In 1928, the first independent volunteer rescue, volunteer rescue squad in the country was run by Life-saving and First Aid Crew, who was established, it was established and run in Virginia by Julian Stanley Wise. In the 1950s, was the beginning of modern EMS. Most funeral homes began patient care and handed nearly half of the country's ambulances. In 1968, the nation's first non-alcoholic call received at a police station in Hayleyville, Alabama, that was placed by Senator Frank DeFay. The EMS System Act in 1973, this act provided funding for over 300 EMS systems and marked the establishment of emergency medicine as a distinct specialty with residency programs starting in 1972. and marked the establishment of emergency medicine as a distinct specialty with residency programs starting in nineteen seventy-two. Funding change in the eighties with the Omnibus Budget Reconciliation Act, which shifted EMS funding sources and expanded the role of EMS to include chronic diseases, pediatric care, and emphasizing integration with proper healthcare. Recent advancements over the last decade, EMS is focused on research and technology, improving real-time patient data transmission and quality improvement initiatives. And here are some fun facts about EMS that I thought were kind of interesting. When New York City launched its first ambulance service in eighteen sixty-nine, horse-drawn vehicles sounded a gong to get people to pull over since they had, like, some tires back there.
Maybe we should try it.
Its first aid bag contained a stomach pump, bandages, sponges, handcuffs, a straitjacket, and a cord brandy.
Maybe we'll try that.
The first defibrillator designed for the use in the field was developed by Dr. Frank Handridge of Belfast, Ireland. He installed the first version in a Belfast ambulance in eighteen sixty-five, and it weighed a hundred and fifty pounds and operated from two carburetors. And now today, they're, like, moving the spinning wheel. But that's just some fun facts and history on EMS. I just want to introduce you to my employees. We have twenty EMTs, four EMT intermedians, six EMT paramedics, two CPR drivers, and Betty is our family clerk. Let's just celebrate the town's Tassau EMS during EMS week and thank them for the manly commitment and service. I really am truly blessed to work with these guys and y'all, and there would not be a Tassau EMS department without them. So I'm gonna let them each state their name and how long they've been in EMS.
You first?
Sure.
James Dunn, getting known for twenty-eight years.
Matthew Well, we're twenty-third.
This is my right-hand woman here, I couldn't get much done without her.
I'm Betty Collins, I've been with the town EMS for five years. Thirty years ago, I was a field paramedic, and now coming with ten years' experience.
I'm Joe Black, I've been with us a little bit over a year.
Chance Carter, been with us for seven years.
Michael Stillner, almost two years.
Robbie Agelson, this is year number twenty-nine.
James Strach, twenty-five years.
Samantha Maddie, five years.
Matthew Jackson, four years.
Dustin Taylor, eighteen years.
Eric Barad, two years.
Caleb Rogers, two years.
Luca Moss, one year.
Tony Wyatt.
May fourth was forty-three years.
Wow.
We really do appreciate all you guys do, yes, the ones that you hope you don't, you don't steal, but we're glad they're there when you do need them. And if I am correct, Ms. Leanne is gonna be treating you guys to a lunch, and the same with the PD, so did you have one more thing to add to your schedule for next week?
Well, at the end of my speech, I was gonna recognize the police department because it was EMS week that she covered that, so it's gonna be shout out to you guys.
And thank you to Cindy, and how long has Cindy been in EMS?
Twenty-four years, and I'm the director here for fifteen.
Well, thank you guys for everything you do. I know sometimes it's a thankless job, but we know you guys are working hard and we really do appreciate it.
I hope you get a rescue squad first, so.
We are working, we promise.
It's not looking too good on the outside, so I hope y'all, I hope we get it started.
Yes, we're getting there.
Thank you guys for coming out, thank you for all your work. So, next on our agenda is the American Legion Boys State and Auxiliary Girls State support request, Dr. Rick.
Oh, Karen Johnson has submitted a donation.
Let's go.
They also submitted this last year, they have a program called Boys State and the Girls Auxiliary State. The programs are for one week, they are school participants, and they have boys and girls from Bluefield, St. Lawrence, Tassau, Richland, and Graham. This year, they're wishing to go to this program. The fee is five hundred dollars per student, and the Tassau Post one hundred thirty-three, which is the American Legion right across their street there, they have approved to pay for one boy and one girl from Tassau, and it says they regret that they cannot send more due to their funding. So they would like any additional funding that we may be able to give them.
Sorry, thanks, thank you.
Did we contribute last year? They did not.
How many Q.?
They did not say. He didn't give me the number of interested boys or girls. He did say they have boys and girls from Tassau, Richland, and Graham.
Historically, you used to send two, each, it would be two girls, thirty, boys state.
For me, it's still great.
Used to be, it was open for that, I think that's going away about eight. Okay, so one each now, okay? So there's no amount, we don't know the amount of kids from town of Tassau.
Not, but the, the post over here pays for one boy and one girl, so that would be a thousand dollars.
And he said there's one, one of each school?
That's what, that's what Brad said.
Historically, I mean, this year.
Two of each, but he doesn't know.
Ordinarily, it used to, it's pretty big line, but they selected.
Right.
Because this, using this faculty, you have to select, you have to apply, you have to back it, you have to select.
And I think we are. Is there any way you can contact them or contact this person?
The school, what would we be able to tell you? Tassau High School, what would we be able to tell you?
Well, contact Tassau High School and see if they got, how many, no, we're in Tassau.
I could contact Mr. Johnson. It does say that the program is for one week and it starts Father's Day.
So we, you can get ahold of him this week, we could do this over email and then ratify it next month since the, the meeting will be after the event's our typical.
Okay.
So the ref at this year here?
Does that work for council?
It doesn't.
That's where he's going, ask company here.
Well, I think the only fund that Tassau's doing is not, is not to.
Well, you know, the guideline for one to ten students is between a hundred and three hundred, so. Yeah.
So if you could shoot us an email once you have that information, and council can act accordingly. All right, next on the agenda is the Tassau Class of nineteen seventy-three, two foundations and a resolution of support. So resolution of support, whereas, whereas the members of Tassau High School Class of nineteen seventy-three celebrated their fiftieth high school graduation anniversary on September ninth, twenty twenty-three, marking a significant milestone in their lives and demonstrating their enduring bonds of friendship and moderate and whereas the motto of Tassau High School Class of nineteen seventy-three, today we follow, tomorrow we lead, emboldens their commitment to leadership and excellence, and whereas the members of Tassau High School Class of nineteen seventy-three have excelled in numerous fields and endeavors and Tassau, Tassau County throughout the Commonwealth and beyond making substantial contributions to their community, and whereas recognizing the importance of preserving their legacy, the members of the Tassau High School Class of nineteen seventy-three embarked on a commendable initiative of producing a documentary and a two-hundred-and-fifty-page book to chronicle their journey and contributions over the past five decades, which archives the buried achievements, outlooks, and memories of the class. And whereas the Tassau High School Class of nineteen seventy-three compiled twenty-five hours of video interviews of members of the class as part of the documentary and publication project, which serves as a testament to the resilience, success, and endurance spirit of the Tassau High School Class of nineteen seventy-three, as well as a record to their positions of leadership and their numerous prestigious accolades and awards within the Commonwealth and beyond. And whereas the fiftieth anniversary of the Tassau High School Class of nineteen seventy-three, Tassau High School Centennial Class offers an opportunity to reflect on the school's legacy during the school's one-hundred-and-fiftieth year, as well as on accomplishments of many of the members of the class. And now therefore, they resolve that I, Michael F. Brooks, on behalf of Tassau Town Council, hereby commend the Tassau High School Class of nineteen seventy-three on the occasion of its fiftieth anniversary towards members' dedication to preserving their history and inspiring future generations, adopted this thirtieth day of May, twenty twenty-five.
So we're voting on?
To support the resolution? Yes.
We make a motion to support the resolution?
I'll second it. So I've got a second and discussion. All in favor of supporting the resolution, stateside by saying aye? Aye. All opposed, stateside by saying a nay?
No.
All right, so we're moving forward. So next on the agenda is Free Rabies Clinic Eagle Scout Project, Clay Yurins. You'll make him fill up by himself, aren't you? I like it.
Hello, my name is Clay Yurins, I'm an up-and-coming Eagle Scout who is looking to get both permission and help funding for my Eagle Scout project. I've noticed that there has not been much help in the last few years making sure that pets are up to date on the rabies vaccinations, which is why for my project, I would like to do a free rabies vaccination day. I have secured permission from my scouting council, spoken to the animal shelter, and recruited veterinarian support. With your permission before September, I will organize and complete a free rabies vaccination clinic that will be held at the animal shelter on one Saturday. I hope to get funding for around five hundred vaccinations, which is about six dollars per vaccination, coming out to around three thousand. Additionally, I would be greatly appreciated if I could get funding for advertisement or help with advertisement. I am also going to talk to the Farm Bureau to see if I can get their contribution as well. I'm requesting your permission, and if possible, any donations. Are there any questions?
Are there, that's one of the things I was just trying to search. Rabies vaccinations, is it just one shot or is it multiple shots?
Usually just one.
Okay.
Per year?
Day, is it?
Yeah.
So the state of Virginia says that if your animal has been vaccinated with rabies in the last three-hundred-and-sixty-five days, then you can count the next vaccine as a three-year. So it's a paperwork legal problem, not a product problem. So if you were to come to a free rabies clinic, if you could present proof that your animal was up to date, you could obtain a three-year designation.
Well, and aren't they having a problem with rabies right now?
Well, I don't know that it's gotten here yet, but I know I've seen several rabies drops. In surrounding counties, there are always, there's always about one every eighteen months or something that's gonna identify, and they do those drops of the bait for the wildlife, so, like, yours is usually animal.
Can we help advertise it on our Facebook page?
Absolutely.
Definitely.
We could help advertise it on our Facebook, social media, our website, and we could put it in our newsletter that we send out every quarter.
Okay.
And you'll just make sure that we get the dates and times.
All right, thank you so much.
How many people in Tassau have pets? Yeah.
Your cat.
I make a motion to donate two hundred dollars to this. Okay. Okay, got a motion?
How much, how much does a shot cost now?
Six dollars.
Six dollars.
Six dollars a piece. I think two hundred. Okay, so I've got a second for two hundred in discussion. All in favor of donating two hundred dollars, stateside by saying aye? Aye. All opposed, stateside by saying a nay? And thanks for doing this. So, next on the agenda is local business recommendation, we have none this week, but Tassau there is scheduled for the June tenth meeting. And next, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes for the council meeting on April eighth, twenty twenty-five, this called work session on April seventeenth, twenty twenty-five. So moved. Want to get a second? Second. I got a second and any discussion?
I'll just make note that I found, like, a couple of double words on there that I've already talked to Jessica about. I'm just gonna get this corrected. It was a, it was a find and replace all error, which happens very easily.
Any more discussion? Approved with edits.
So, yeah.
So all in favor of approving the council meeting minutes with the edits, stateside by saying aye? All opposed, stateside by saying a nay? Minutes approved. So next, I'll entertain a motion for the approval of financial statements and financial report for April, twenty twenty-five. So moved. Want to get a second? Second. Any discussion? All in favor of approval of the financial statements and financial report for April, twenty twenty-five, stateside by saying aye? Aye. All opposed, stateside by saying a nay? All right, financial statement, financial report approved. The next committee and conference update, planning commission committee, council member Davis.
Uh, the planning commission met last Monday. We have an individual that is coming forward that wants to open a business off of Riverside Drive. They talked about the business generally, they have not submitted the, the final information for approval yet. They're gonna come back and do it next month, but we just talked about what we would need on that, on his plan in order to send it up to council for approval. We also talked about platting amendments, basically for the plats to be approved to record in the clerk's office. It's basically acting like all of the plats need to be a subdivision plat, which would be like an entire subdivision, like all of Busville. It's showing all of those requirements in there, so Brad is going through and looking at making some amendments. So if you want to just do a small plat for a locate, a house location survey, you don't have to have everything that you would need on the entire subdivision plat. Is that right, Brad?
Yes.
Okay. An opposite?
So the business, is that the propane?
Yes.
In the corner of Mitchell Street.
Yes, yes.
Any other questions, discussion? Moving right along to our unfinished business. First item is the second reading of card processing fee ordinance, turn five. Do I have a motion? I'd like to waive the second reading. Second. Got a, got a second to waive the second reading, any discussion? All in favor of waiving the second reading, stateside by saying aye? Aye. All opposed, stateside by saying a nay?
I'd like the motion to accept the card processing fee ordinance.
A second.
I also got a second and discussion. All in favor of approving the card processing fee ordinance, stateside by saying aye? Aye. All opposed, stateside by saying a nay? All right. So next is the resolution for transfer of town of Tassau property located at one six one six Riverside Drive, tax map zero nine four Alpha three zero two, zero 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 Alpha two, zero 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 Alpha. Drive, tax map 094 Alpha 302, 000 Alpha 2, 000 Alpha 3, to the town of Tazel IEDA, turn five.
You got it. Your name by it. Did you cut the read? Now I read Johnson.
I got it.
I can find it.
I've got it. We'll have a council member Beasley introduce the filed resolution, which is issued first time on May 13th, 2025. Whereas the industrial economic development authority of the town of Tazel, hereafter IEDA, is the current owner of tax map parcels 094838, 0071, 0076, and 0076A, formerly occupied by Carmelo Lane's bowling alley, located on the north side of Riverside Drive within the town of Tazel. And that's that is incorrect, that's not as, that's formerly occupied by, what the third town, that actually would have been actually destined as warehouses. So I'm sorry, I will have that changed. Because this is the property across the street from that that we're talking about. Whereas the IDAs in the process of raising the form bowling alley property to the purpose of developing the same to a farmer's market for the rest of the town, i.e. the town of Tazel Farmer's Market Project. And whereas certain property located on the southern side of Riverside Drive, which is somewhere in the town of Tazel, on the close proximity to the former bowling alley property, is well suited to furthering the IDAs' development plans for the area, now therefore be resolved by the council of the town of Tazel, Virginia, that the mayor of the town has here authorized to endorse any deed or other related documents necessary to effectuate the transfer of the separate parcels in conjunction with the town of Tazel Farmer's Market Project to be located on the north side of Riverside Drive, copy of the proposed deed and plat reference in the same or attached thereto and filed therewith. Be it further resolved by the council of the town of Tazel, Virginia, that the mayor of the town has here authorized to endorse any deed or other related documents necessary to effectuate the transfer of the separate parcels to the IEDA of the town of Tazel, Virginia. Resolution was seconded by council member. Don't want to speak at once.
Oh.
Whoever. I have the. And the resolution was made by councilman Beasley. Does it need a second?
Uh, council member Davis.
And you need a vote? Roll call vote, please.
Alright, so I need a, need a roll call vote to approve the transfer of, uh, council member Beasley?
Aye.
Council member Klein?
Aye.
Council member Davis?
Aye.
Council member Fox?
Aye.
Council member Hankins?
Aye.
Council member Willis? Council member Davis? Alright, so the change can be made. So next on new business, first reading of charter amendment for town manager residency mileage extension.
Do we want to waive the first reading? You can't waive the first reading.
You can waive the second.
I can't apply its names by this one, too.
I was just trying to say, yeah. I was just trying to say, yeah.
This will be, if proposed amendment to the charter of section 3-91.
Yes, is that where we are, Rick?
Yes.
Yes. Section 3-9 appointees, section 3-9, excuse me, appointees, section 3-91, the town manager who shall be the administrative and executive head of municipal government. He or she shall be chosen by the council without regard to legal reasons solely upon the basis of his or executive and administrative qualifications. At the time of his or appointment, he or she need not be a resident of the town or the Commonwealth, but during his or tenure of office shall reside within the town and is encouraged to reside within the town limits and may reside within a reasonable distance outside the town limits upon majority approval of the appointing council. Upon approval, this proposal will occur by action of town of Tazel, Town of Tazel Town Council. Public notice was made from Watts, Virginia, through section 15.2-202 and 15.2-1427. I think before you have a motion for you on that as well, there.
We do.
It should be in your packet on the next page. There is a record of your previous vote that you did to set the public hearing, and at the top of that, there's a section of language that specifically needs to be passed.
For the purpose of basically presenting a packet to the general assembly, you need to have me both.
I hereby move that the town of Tazel amend its charter of 1958 to reflect a request of the council to revise the residency parameters for the appointee of town manager during his term tenure in that appointment, and further request that the following suggested charter modification be submitted to the general assembly for consideration at its upcoming legislative session in January 2026. I make a motion.
I'll second it.
So we've got a second. So do we need to do another roll call vote?
Yep.
Alright, council member Beasley?
Aye.
Council member Klein?
Aye.
Council member Davis?
Aye.
Council member Fox?
Aye.
Council member Hankins?
Aye.
Council member Willis?
Aye.
Alright, so that carries. So next, does the annual cafeteria plan resolution support?
I think we should read this entire thing.
This is something that we do every year. It's so we can have our benefits pre-tax, such like health insurance, the YCA, any other type of benefit that we have. But we go through this every year to, to get that approved.
Any changes this year or last year? Do you have additional benefits?
It looks just as long as it did before.
Brad, do I have to read this resolution?
That's what you get for making him read the last.
Resolution of the town of Tazel council members for the adoption of the town of Tazel cafeteria plan. On this date, the town of Tazel council members did meet to discuss the implementation of the town of Tazel flexible benefits plan to be effective July 1st, 2025. Let it be known that the following resolutions were duly adopted by the town of Tazel council members and that such resolutions have not been modified or rescinded as of the date due up. Whereas that the form of cafeteria plan is authorized under section 125 of the Internal Revenue Code of 1986, presented to this meeting is hereby adopted and approved that the proper officers of the employer are hereby authorized and directed to execute and deliver the plan administrator's wonderful copies of the plan. And whereas that the plan year shall be for a period beginning on July 1st, 2025 and ending June 30th, 2026. And whereas that the employer shall contribute to the plan amounts sufficient to meet its obligation under the cafeteria plan in accordance with the terms of the plan document and shall notify the plan administrator to which periods said contributions shall be applied. And whereas that the proper officers of the employer shall act as soon as possible to notify employees of the adoption of the cafeteria plan by delivering to each employee a copy of the summary of the plan description presented to this meeting, which form is hereby approved and now therefore be resolved that I, Michael F. Hoops, on behalf of the town council certifies that attached hereto as exhibits A and B respectively are true copies of the plan document and summary of the plan description for the town of Tazel's flexible benefits plan approved and adopted in foregoing resolution. Be it further resolved that I can attest that the above resolutions were made with the consent of the full town council, each of whom were in attendance on this date. Need a vote to approve?
Make a motion to approve the resolution.
I'll second it.
That's second in discussion. All in favor of approving the resolution is four states by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed, states by saying a nay? So next on the agenda is the enterprise lease presentation with our chief, Mr. Lambert, and deputy chief Lou.
I will let deputy chief Lou do the presentation for you. Basically, what we're looking at is in, in the past years, we've done a cycling of two vehicles per year. As our budget has been cut, prices have went up, we're now down to, we only will only have, or we can purchase one vehicle. When you outfit a vehicle, we'll just want to have exactly what, what the cost has been, but we're, we're falling behind in our fleet. And it's, it's starting to catch us in our maintenance department. It's starting to catch us all the way around. If I'm not mistaken, we are four vehicles behind at this particular point. Is that correct, Lou?
Uh, gonna be six.
One V six, but not, not currently. Currently, we're, we're four, if I'm correct. Anyways, we're, we're behind in our fleet. We are way behind in our fleet, and it's, it's been budgetary issues. And the cost, y'all know what a vehicle costs. What we used to pay $28,000 for a vehicle three years ago, we're now paying $42,000 or $43,000 for a vehicle. And, and that's going with the cheapest, cheapest vehicle we can go with this current time, which is Dodge. We've had good service so far with Dodge, so we're, we're, our plan is if we have the blessing of this council and our madam manager, we will continue to build with Dodge. And I'll let deputy chief Lou go over with you. It's, it's gonna be a four-year plan for our entire fleet.
So it's gonna be a tedious way to explain it out. This is how Enterprise said it to me. They sent it to us with the first year going in with nine vehicles, so I modified that down to what we can appropriately do with our vehicles and being for the cost of outfitting, paying the outfitter and getting those onto the road. So the first year, you're gonna see we have two Dodge Durango V6s. They're coming in at, with the two Durangos and one Chevy Silverado, and unfortunately, we missed the deadline on the Silverados to make manufacturer order dates. So that's gonna be, have to be modified as well to be an F-150 instead of the Silverado. Price doesn't change, it's just where we couldn't get our order in time, we don't have to be able to stay for certainly, had to be in by the end of last month. So the first year, 25 to 26, and this is rolling equity into each year, but the first year we won't have any. The second year, you'll see where that comes into play. So the first year, you're gonna be paying for those three vehicles at $27,286.84. So that's the three vehicles. Our current price of what we just purchased, our one Dodge Durango Ford was $48,725 is what we paid for our last one, not including outfit fees. Upfit for that one that we just did was $8,700 something as well. And so as you can see by this, with our upcoming budget that we have of 63, rolling into 25, 26 year, or 26 year, I think it was 63,000. So I modified this to fit inside of that with the three vehicles that we can have and the $8,000 fluctuating back and forth, of course. We could fit three vehicles, $8,000 of average out to $53,000, which would be under our budget of 63. That's in the year of 26. Rolling into 26, 27, if you've got any questions, just let me know and I can break it down.
I see they have an annual mileage, so what you guys typically put on the car?
So we have 10,000 on there. We fluctuate back and forth. That is usually our annual, what we do have. These months right here broke down into a 60-year or a 60-month term. The way Enterprise has it set up, we will no longer have these vehicles more than 48 if we do what they want us to do. So that's every four years rotating out, so 48 months, but it's a breakdown to 60. At any point in time that we decide that we do not want to go along with Enterprise, at that point in time, we just pay the difference. And so we still get those vehicles, we'll pay the, has the monthly, monthly cost on there, what you would pay, or you just pay the difference of 29.27, 286. Rolling into year 26, 27, you have one Durango and two Tahoe 4x4s on here. That'll be a finance payment of 32,430 is what that will be. At this point in time is when we start rolling our equity in. So what we're doing there is our vehicles that we currently have at 100 to 130,000 miles, we'll be selling those. We can't really use those at that point in time to where the mileage and everything that we have on them, they're becoming unsafe at that point in time. So we're selling those off, putting that equity into this deal, and that money that we get from those vehicles is rolling into this to make our payment as what it is. So this year would be, or the year of 26 to 27, we pay 32,430.58. The number below that is the prior year of what we paid, 27,286.84. So it does the same thing as the first term, 60 months, so on, so forth payments. And then rolling into 27 to 28, and at this point in time, we'll have six new vehicles on our fleet as well. So rolling into year 27, 28, three Dodge Durango V6s, one Silverado. The reason why we're doing the Silverados is, is the gentleman that made this and that I modified is true car salesman, or put it that way. True car salesman, if you ask him one question, he's gonna answer it 17 different ways. So he says that we can get the most money out of our pickup trucks when we roll into, sell them back off to roll it back into what we have. So we're trying to work those in. Police trucks are becoming more modern nowadays as it comes in, so they got the same safety features and everything as regular police vehicles, and they are SSV, PBB vehicles as well, so they are police rated at that point in time.
So the first truck that's gonna be an F-150, is that gonna be a police vehicle? Is it gonna be admin truck?
That's gonna be police vehicles. They'll all be PBB, SSVs. You can get, according to him, like I said, he's a true car salesman, I can't ever get really a yes or a no out of it, whether I get more out of admin vehicles, whether I get more out of the SSV vehicles. It's, it's a tough time to do.
When he first started, I think he was one, his, his projection was for us to do the trucks as admin vehicles and every year rotate those out because our return was gonna be higher by rotating those out. Well, we got to looking at our budget and it just, there was no way we could possibly do that because by his guidelines, he wanted us to do nine vehicles with the mileage we have in ours, and that just wasn't gonna be feasible. So therefore, we had to start scaling back, and this is where we'll, as family, came to, to get the, the complete turnaround on it. If we could do that, that he's wanting to do on the, the trucks, turning them in every year, we may do a little better, but you're gonna pay the war upfront at the beginning of this, of this thing.
So do these prices include the outfit, or do we?
No, that's not included. That is the vehicle itself.
That's, that's the reason we did the number of vehicles that we did. So in this year, we did three Durangos and one truck again, coming in at 33,4, 33,493. That is gonna be in year 20, 27 to 28, as we all know, the cost is gonna go up at that point in time, but I still average at the end at 8,000 to 9,000 per outfit. So there you got to add that on top of the 33. With the trucks, we're hoping to make those into our investigation units, so not put the full $8,000 into those pickups, so we have the bare minimum like sirens, radio, what have you on there. We do reuse all our equipment that we have, so all the vehicles that we get and purchase from year to year, we outfit them. By the time that they get wore out, we de-outfit them, take all that stuff that we can use, lights, sometimes we throw away, sometimes we reuse. Most time we reuse sirens, radios, all that. Can't really use, reuse cages, it's a money racket, so they make it specific for the vehicle make and model for a year, so we have to buy certain aspects, but we can reuse most of it. So then the 26, or the 27 to 28, we'll be paying 33,493 in that year, and then that will be for three Durangos and one truck. And then rolling into the 28, 29, and this is when our four year will be up. We can, you know, continue to do this if y'all see fit after the four years, but we only get a four-year plan with it. And then going into the fourth year, our payment, our price payment will be 30. And then going into the fourth year, our payment, our price payment will be $35,654. So at this point in time, by year end four, we're gonna have 15 brand-new, well, at this point in time, slightly used and brand-new vehicles by the end of year four. So that's 15 new vehicles. We currently have 17 to 20 on our fleet. As we all know, vehicles go down, drop the hat anymore. So that's 15 new vehicles. You know, if we see fit to go through with this four-year, last year, we'll pay $35,654. And if we decide not to go forth, at that point in time, you just pay what we owe, and then we'd be out of the subject. And all these years that we've done this, and it's been into our budget that we currently have rolling into 26, the outfitting and everything, I've tried to make it fit to where we'll be always green, so we'll never be in the red.
Do we have the mileage?
Mileage.
Yeah, on rental.
Their projection, their projection is, is they want 10,000 miles. With what he's presenting, there is, if we go, let's just say we do 20,000 miles, there's no penalty for mileage like there is with a private company or a private citizen. It just reduces your return, is when it's sold at their auction. It just reduces your return of, but there's no penalty going over a mileage. There's no like 50 cents per mile over or anything like that.
And I was saying that this, oh, I'm sorry, Dave, you still on?
Yeah, what about the, if you have a vehicle goes down, if you have trucks, what do you do?
It'd be the same kind of maintenance plan that we have now, so we'll take it to either a town garage or we'll take it to the sheet. They offer a maintenance plan, but it's a, not a good option.
Very difficult to work with.
Very, very. So you have to take them to certain dealers that they wouldn't, you know, give you to take to and everything. So the maintenance plan, I think it's actually on here, but we would not be going that route. I think they actually have gas and maintenance on here, but we wouldn't be doing either one, we'd still be doing our same, how we do gas and maintenance as well. And.
Also, the benefit of having a newer fleet is you're not gonna have your maintenance cost other than your normal brakes, tires, oil changes. If you've got a vehicle that's got 50,000 miles on it in four years, or 60,000 miles on it, that's, that's a whole lot less of maintenance that you're gonna be paying. We got a vehicle right now of 120, 130,000 miles, and we're gambling, and we're having to pay the paper sometimes on that. But that would be also be an extra benefit. If we went to the Enterprise fleet thing, if you gotta see fit for that, the benefit is gonna save you quite a bit in your maintenance costs as well.
And then with the maintenance costs that we have currently, we're at $26,000 this year just with the maintenance on the current vehicle we have. Our fleet is old. I mean, it's old. We got six vehicles at 100 to 130,000 miles, and we're still using those on native basis. So maintenance costs, by July, I'm saying it's gonna be $30,000 if not more, in what we have in maintenance alone. I mean, you can't even buy a headlight for these things. They're $700 for headlights. The prices of things are just ridiculous, and to keep a fleet in our age that we have, we just sold their last one auction, we had 14, we had 13, 14 still in our fleet at that point in time. These are police vehicles and over 10 years old, so we just sold those off. If we go by the, well, I typed up a little bit, we go by now, if we did the $48,000, what we currently bought the 2025 Durango for, and we do that per year, if we buy two, we'd be at $96,178 if we bought two of those per year. That's without the outfitting. So you've got to average at least $9,000 for the outfitting with that, so you'd be at, you know, 110, 115,000 dollars with that. By the time we did that in four years, without this, if we did it on our own with a four-year plan, by the time to the end of year four, with the vehicles that we bought, we'd be at $384,712. That's with eight vehicles, and then outfit costs $69,856 for a total of $454,468 if we did ours on. So that's what we're looking at.
And you don't have eight?
Yeah, I'm somewhat familiar. Yeah, that would be only eight vehicles instead of what we're doing here with 15.
In order to turn over your fleet, I feel like, and I'm familiar with this program, it's the most cost-efficient and maximize your time to turn your fleet over, to keep the police property in the vehicles, so I think it's appropriate.
Yeah, I know you've had, I know. What are your thoughts?
Bottom line, my police officers need to have police creatures.
Oh, absolutely. But you're familiar with like the budget and all that, and their budget and what they come to you with, so I mean, you
So as.
You see it as, you know, the right thing to do, or?
As Chief and Deputy Chief have said, you know, this will get us a whole new fleet in four years. We can't buy like what we're doing right now. Next year, and next year's, that would be six vehicles, if we don't do something, we've got a big problem. So in speaking with him, and meeting with Matt.
Slaughter.
With Enterprise.
He's back at the government. I told Will, I said, he shows up, I'll kick him out the door.
Yeah, it's all on the coast.
They were trying to sell like five other ones to go with the first year before I bumped in here, so it was crazy.
So in order to combat our, our situation, I feel that, I feel that Chief and Deputy Chief have put the time, put the effort, put the study into this, that I feel confident with their recommendation that they would like to move forward with this.
Deputy Chief has really put a lot of time into it. He has spent hours, been on phones with people that's actually doing it. I mean, he's spent a lot of time into this. Some people is actually going. I think Buchanan County is in the program right now. There's people that's having to pick up this program because of budgetary problems that everyone in the United States is facing.
I can't remember the exact number he told me from Richmondville, but it was a substantial number of agencies that's happened to do this to keep up with the man. What killed us most was 2020, 2021, COVID years. Everybody knows how that was. Couldn't get vehicles, police departments especially. I mean, we couldn't keep up with it, and then the prices skyrocketed from the roof, so.
So you're going out, you got the strike about that?
Yeah, the $8,762 is the full package of strike lights, sirens, cages, everything that we use on a native basis inside of our patrol vehicles. That's a good one.
And also, if there were grant opportunities that would, you know, come available, you could also still apply for those grant opportunities to get a vehicle that would not be included in this.
We attempted a vehicle this past time on a grant that just got submitted, and they wouldn't let us. Anything that had a motor attached to it, we couldn't put it in that grant. We thought we just wanna have an okay for that, but we were told immediately, you gotta pull that out because that's gonna make you fail with whatever else you're trying to get because it's got a motor attached to it.
Going this way with the lease also takes, frees up some of your time where you have to get rid of the car because they automatically take it back, because now you have to get it ready and get, I mean, you're still gonna have to take all the stuff off of it. But they just take it back. You don't ever worry about getting it solved.
Enterprise actually has their own auction block.
Right.
So I mean, they, if they just don't send it to a regular auction, Enterprise has their own auction company, and all Enterprise rental vehicles goes through that block for all of the, such as RMBs or free and forward vehicles and the dealerships to go purchase, so they just.
Just take them back, right, to get new ones?
And they can get them. They can get them, they drive them off to us. We don't have to do anything except for take them, schedule them, get them outfitted, schedule them to strike, and we're good to go.
So you mentioned the equity piece, and it says equity from some units, and it's zero on all these years.
Yeah.
If we continue to do this, we start turning over the vehicles we're leasing off them, do we start to get equity back?
So how I have this was set up, I have each year that we buy and sell, I have it already figured in to roll our equity into this.
Okay.
Yeah, so I can.
It balances out.
Yeah, that little yellow up top left, I can change that to no, and that could show you what we would project and get out of the vehicles without rolling that equity into everything.
Okay.
It takes it up just a little bit, but that's how our car salesman had said that we should do this. So I took his advice and it lowered our price.
What's his name?
Name's Matt.
So do we need a motion to pass it over?
That would be great if we could get support for that.
I'm making a motion and go with this enterprise.
I'll second it. I've got a second. Any discussion?
Yeah, just a quick question. Like, in looking at the prices of the vehicles, the difference, I notice the county has like four Tauruses, I believe. Is that what it is?
No.
No, they're older. They're older. Is there a reason that we don't do cars anymore?
Yeah, that's why we do. So you can't get Tauruses anymore, you can't get Chargers anymore. They're actually bringing the Charger back in 26, but it's gonna be EV. So your first two years of the Chargers will be.
Yeah. Old drive.
Yeah, and a lot of the roads that we have here, when we did have our Tauruses on our fleet, we had, you know, seven or eight Tauruses. We bottomed out, we couldn't get to certain areas. You go down railroad, go up on, and all that stuff. You bottomed out, you know, it was terrible for it.
So it's emissions.
Okay, yeah. That's the reason why we have SUVs, and we fit a little bit better in it, the equipment that we put in these vehicles for every day. Especially me, you know, you get me into a car, I look like an elephant, you know? But it was, yeah, that's the main reason we got away from vehicles, just talk about.
The reason to get in and out, especially with.
Could I see 26, 27? Okay, and then 27 to 28?
Yeah, it's four.
Okay, so we will have to plan for escalating costs as the, as the council, right?
So it'd be a minor escalation, but not too bad.
Do you have the ability to mediate, so if you go to three, and you say, you know what, we're gonna do two this year?
Yeah, and at any point in time, the big question was, what if we get to year three and we decide we don't want this anymore? And that was the big, you know, what do you do? It's just like buying a car, we pay the difference off of it. Yeah, that's all we do is pay the difference. So if it's $33,000, we're into it. You know, nine months, we decide we don't wanna be in this, we just pay the difference of what we owe, and that'd be it. You can pay that in the monthly payments, or you can pay that in the terms they have laid out for 60, 60 months. But like I said, at the four-year that we have, we'll no longer have these vehicles more than four vehicles. So that'll be the first year vehicles, no vehicles for four years.
I'm all for it.
So I've got a second, if there's no more discussion. All in favor of moving forward with the enterprise lease program for the PD, states of what say and I. All opposed, states of what say and nay. There you go. Too bad they don't do fire trucks and.
They do do some things.
How about trucks, twice, but they do do some other things.
Yeah. All these vehicles look nice on the outside. Yeah, they shine, it's great. And everybody think, they don't need this, they don't know what's under that hood yet. They can break down easy, so that's why they're not, and I think they can get them sold too. And the fire trucks, I think they need to be looked at on some issues, because they look pretty on the outside, but on the inside, it could be bad. I don't wanna see any car, any fire truck going down the road and breaks down. That makes me feel kinda bad.
Was it just a little bit?
A little bit, not broken down.
All right, next, next on the agenda, budget amendments, treacherous.
So in your council packet, you'll see I've got budget amendments for general fund, water fund, and super fund. Most of these are just to allocate for some over expenses with some leeway we have within that same budget to just kind of offset that. If you wanna look through that, if you have any questions, please let me know.
Motion to approve the amendments.
No objections, all right. Now, get a second. Now, second. Any discussion? All right, no discussion. All in favor of approving the budget amendments, states of what say and I.
Aye.
All opposed, states of what say and nay. All right, budget amendments approved. So next on the agenda is the first reading, zoning, air slams, progress.
Check 23, sounding off to one in general, check 23-2.1, Town of Tassau zoning map. Being ordained by the Council of Town of Tassau, Virginia, for section two of the Town Charter, section 23-2, 23-2.1, and 23-6, by the Code of the Town of Tassau, Virginia, code section 15.2-2281. That hereby amends the Code of the Town of Tassau to make the following changes to the Town of Tassau zoning map in order to reclassify the zoning designation of certain parcels of real estate located within the town as identified below and to recognize, excuse me, and to reconfigure the Town of Tassau zoning map accordingly. Section 23-2.1, Town of Tassau zoning map, Tassau map, shit, Tassau, it's been a long night. Tax map parcel numbers, 094B1090008B, and 094B109000B. Reclassify conservation, special C1 to residential limited, R1, zero to two dwelling units per acre gross. All of the designations indicated on the Town of Tassau zoning map remain unchanged. First read.
Okay, so next is miscellaneous. I see they have lots of thank you cards and stuff in the packets, so council can look at those at their leisure. Next is miscellaneous public comments.
Motion to adjourn.
No one signs. And next is the council member comments.
I've got two.
Motion to adjourn.
Well, I've got a comment real quick, if you please. They, we had spent this time of the summer talking about a, we contracted out some lawyers to, he says with a solar project out, out towards Lincolnshire, and it's just been calm silent for a little bit. I didn't know if there was any update or any progress towards it, or if we can talk about it.
I've already been trying, I can get back in touch with Jeff Gore. And I spoke roughly, it's been at least a month ago, and I reached out to him and said, what's going on? He said, they were so hot out there for the longest time, they were energy-wise, and they're attorneys, and then all at once, they've they've just gone silent for no reason, so I can reach back out to him tomorrow and say, Eddie, what are you hearing? So he can reach out to him, and the attorney, so they.
Where are they? Is it a sleeping dog?
Either way, I mean, it's one way or another, they go in with the project and puts 25 grand in the costs. They agreed, they agreed to all our terms, and terms of lease payments, terms of payment for the property, and the upfront costs, and the attorney's fees provisioned too, so they agreed to all of that.
Where does it go?
Where?
The solar.
If across from Pizza Hut roughly?
Down in the.
Up on the backside, below the crest of the hill on the Barnes property. Below 460. So if what we initially saw on the preliminary maps as indicated holds true, you won't be able to see them unless you're somewhere like up on the peak property, Andy Cecil's, the hunters, looking down into it. You wouldn't see it.
Who bought the, the Barnes property?
Send it sold yet? Hasn't been sold yet, and I'm worried.
They said it's gonna be on a radio station, some radio station, option.
I have heard it was gonna go for option, but it hasn't happened yet. And they, they do intend to put permissions in there to keep the Barnes trail when it's sold.
They don't have a choice. They don't have choice.
Well, but we're talking about, um, some family members maybe or something.
Right, the, the trail, we have a contract business in that door. The grant is, is there, it runs with the land, so it's sold, it's.
All right, second, second issue, Dave, this one's, I think you'll be in line with this one because we've been discussing it, uh, the last two years, we did a limited test experiment. But I would like to consider this year that we limit Cavins Creek and allow for night fishing at Lincolnshire to go on throughout the summer. And I think you've got to cut it off when they start trapping, stocking the trout again in the fall. But, um, but, uh, we, we didn't have any issues last year. There's positive report from Chief, if I remember correctly. We had some issues, honestly, we don't, we didn't, um, I don't, are you wanting to like open it up every night to allow that? I, I think, and one or two ways. Either I think that you open it up on weekends or you open it up, you know, just like you do with Cavins Creek. You've got an area and you've got, you've got one ingress, one egress, you've got cameras out there and, and you allow it to go on through the summer so folks have access to their public land. And, uh, that's, I make a motion on it.
Are you just going to allow easy now?
Well, we can have a discussion after the second.
Are you going to allow like online camping?
Well, see, I would love to increase camping, especially because it's a way that we can increase.
On your fish?
You can increase revenue out there. So for example, I've, I've mentioned, you know, the place where there's a picnic table, there's pine trees on the back right hand side.
Think about hammocks out there, you been out there to hammocks?
Man, tell me you learned more about this than that.
The, uh, all right, big picture, we, we've discussed, come on, be nice. The, uh, we've discussed, you know, ways to increase recreation access in our community. I think primitive camping makes a ton of sense. Man, it would be fantastic to take like, you know, I've got my children, to be able to backpack in, it's a mile walk. You've got kids who are ten years old, younger. They can do it, get something exposed to the outdoors. You know, you have very low costs in setting up some railroad ties, building a horny trap for them. So you've got a platform to put a tent on and, you know, charge five, ten bucks a night. You know, it allows families to, to be in and I would consider it a safer space. And, uh, and it increases outdoor recreation, tear that with the night fishing. And, uh, we've got another draw to tell.
Do we current, we don't currently have those platforms there, but.
We don't, no.
No, okay.
So I've got a second for that, don't I?
Yes.
I just counted it as a second.
Yeah, go ahead.
Now, if you want to, if we want to amend the motion to, to pair in camping with it, I, I think it would be. Stick the fish.
I think we need, I think we need to get the platforms first.
You need to contact insurance carrier.
For sure, let's, let's look into that. So if we, if we look at the night fishing and, uh, and then have amend the motion to include investigating primitive camping at Lincolnshire. For, for increased outdoor recreation.
My kids got my cash. My, my insurance sake, God.
I think our concern and, and, and we're, I mean, we're not trying to push out, but our, what, what me and Brad have been talking about is we've got those bounty things out there.
Yeah.
Of how are we going to secure that, that we don't have partying going on and somebody getting up there? And that's the only issue that I'm seeing is, is what liability is that going to open up and what trouble is it going? And if we get to trouble, then we can come back and revisit that.
What, what hurt last year?
We, we didn't have no problems, but I think when, if we opened it up five days a week or every weekend, I think we will have issues.
Well, how's?
But we had zero, zero problems.
Do y'all control?
Can we mount?
Yes, we do.
Four-wheel drive?
Well, I would not allow any of my guys to ride anything back through there in the dark because that road is not wide enough for us to be in the dark.
Well, the golf cart.
Yes, maybe the mule or, and or the golf cart, yes, but not a vehicle.
We could mount cameras on the, uh, the new building to monitor the, the.
Sure.
I mean, I don't think that's, I think you kind of have that. Cameras are in there. What's that?
Cameras are.
Cameras are in there, so they're, they're overlooking that. One thing that kind of in relation to this, I'm sorry, I know we got the motion and everything, but.
No, it's fine.
The bathrooms on that building, um, we, we have porta potties up there, but we have bathrooms that are there that are locked.
They're, they're winterized.
Okay. So that's, that's why we shut them down.
There's no heat in that building.
Okay.
I mean, we'll, we'll be opening that up, but that's why they've been done.
Right.
This past, you know, few months.
Gotcha.
Another thing we have to think about is additional trash scattered around the water and the fire danger, we don't have a campfire back there. Fire, fire cannot get back to that if they do have a fire shoot. We do not have that road to get fire protection back there if anyone wants to get out. That's another thing we need to.
Okay, I'd like to put one.
We'll provide it with other. Take a bucket out there.
So, I need a fire plug.
Trying to put all the spray in my head.
Okay, why don't we do this? Okay, I'll amend the motion to say, you know, request approval to have night fishing. Uh, in, like, it's got to be in line with D M R regulations, right? Just job fishing. So, uh, motion approved, night fishing at Lincolnshire through the summer in conjunction with D M R regulation and to investigate primitive camping at Lincolnshire.
Brad, I'm looking at you.
Contact Ursa.
So after contacting, we're discussing with.
I think you've got to talk to your carrier first, see what you can, can't do. Because any get it to, all right, you have people there, do you need to have ignite consent or releases from anyone who's out there? You've got no lifeguards, you've got a lot of issues there. You go through your carrier to find out what they will hook up.
So would it be safer to amend the, the motion to?
Say, explore it.
To talk to our.
I think you talk to your carrier first.
Talk to. Talk to each other.
Report back by June meeting.
Can I get a second on that?
Second.
All right, any discussion? All right, all in favor of, uh, having the town manager coordinate, talking with our insurance carrier to say about extending fishing hours and the possibility of primitive camping, say so by say no.
All right.
All opposed, say so by say no. All right.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to address the council if I could.
Brad, I, I can't wait.
Go ahead, go ahead, but I think it's serious. I think.
All right, you're on the list.
I'm, I'm sorry, I was.
If you did, I.
Take, I'd be, I'd be great.
Yeah, you named an address and you did drop the money.
Yeah, that's, my, my name and address, huh? I'm with the team, with, with the Tazza Torpedoes. We talked, uh, a couple of years ago about even some, um, equipment replaced.
Yeah, the, the line.
Well, uh, the lane line, just the reel, not the lines.
Right.
And I went ahead and, um, the, the, I think you'll be, you'll be surprised by the cost. It's two thousand some dollars total. It's not as much as I think y'all thought. But anyway, um, I went ahead and borrowed money.
Yeah, we should, I, I think we bought some.
We, we did. We, we've already done.
Oh, no.
Someone comes last after the season is over and asks if we could get new lane rails and, and we did.
You, you already bought the reels yourself?
My understanding is.
Oh, crap. I already bought his reels.
So we can confirm with Greg that we have one.
I'll, I'll confirm, but, um.
We already have, okay.
That we've already.
Okay.
Can you send yours back?
Uh, I don't know, they're supposed to be on the way here.
Oh, they might be able to stop them before they get here.
So in the end, you have to contact them once you're.
If you can give me your phone number?
I really don't explain.
Oh, okay, he's, he's got you.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I, I didn't know that, that y'all had approved it.
Yeah, someone came to us.
This, this Kalispie?
This Kalispie, but, yeah, she never called me and told me y'all said yes. So I assumed y'all said no. Okay. All right, I may have to pay the return, return shipping, but that's better than buying the whole thing or. All right, well, we'll thank you for your.
I'll, I'll double check, just to make sure and I can eat those, okay?
I won't cancel tonight. Thank you.
I'll make a motion. Shut down.
Second.
All in favor of, say so by say no.
Aye.